All right. I'd like to call the Village of Weston board trustees meeting to order. If you got all three stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One minute.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Husheng. Let's see, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Manel.
Here.
Zhang.
Here.
White.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll have to just be a little careful with the little leg there, but that went pretty good. Public comments. Anything, anybody have anything for public comments in the audience? Anybody on social media? Who's got that tonight? You? Okay. Is there anybody on?
Yeah, we got people on.
Okay. So calling twice, anything for public comments? Present or on social media and the third time, anybody for public comments? Let's just do the minutes real quick here, minutes from previous meeting. Motion to approve, motion approved by Zhang.
Second.
Second by Manel. Anything on the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So carried. We want to move up. Let's see, is it number twenty-five from reports from departments? Chief, chief has a personal. I can't think of a word.
Obligation.
Obligation, that's a great word. To attend, so if we could let him go first and then we'll go back to the. Start from where we left off.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I did not get my board report in on time, so I handed out a copy of it for your reading later. Briefly, we had eighteen hundred calls for service in the month of December, which is quite high for this time of year. I thought maybe it would start to go down, but I think our staffing level is increasing, so our activity on the proactive side is increasing as well, so. Of those eighteen hundred calls, there were thirteen hundred and forty in the Village of Weston. A couple of things for staffing, we are. We're full staff at the end of the year. We have one position open right now. We're going through a hiring process. Of the applications we took in, we have one that we're gonna test. She took the test today. Wait a couple of days for the results and if she passes, we'll be doing a Zoom command staff interview later this week. And hopefully we'll move her on to the commission. Otherwise, we do not have any viable candidates right now. All our other newer hires are doing great. That's about all I have. Do you have questions?
The other jurisdictions, the thirty-four, just, you know, Wassa or, you know, county stuff, right? Or what?
Yeah, the other jurisdictions, so I've done a lot. Are you looking at the thirty-four?
Yeah.
So our CAD system, our computer aided. Dispatch system. Will catch those other jurisdictions coming in, like the county, if they do a traffic stop or if Wassa PD does a follow-up. Sometimes our traffic stops don't get coded in our jurisdiction. It's very, very few, but it adds to the total. So if we stop a car and they don't pull over till, like just outside of our jurisdiction, we'll call in where the traffic stop. Stop, not where the violation occurred. Sometimes those will end up in the county. We try to catch those, but for a while there it was a lot higher. And we had to work with dispatch to make sure that we're getting those recorded, but for the most, most of them are civil processor, another one. County comes in and does civil process, things like that.
Any changes with QuickTrip with, you can't pump and then go in and pay?
They haven't had any issues.
No?
We had our, this is kind of funny. We had our first complaint of, it was in Schofield, but. Somebody had a Zoom camera and facing the road on one of the back streets in Schofield and we drove by. It was activating their thing, so they're getting alert on the phone and he called to complain that there was police driving by. Too often that his phone went off and he had to take the time to look at his phone. Was wondering why we were driving by ourselves.
I have that.
I've never had that complaint.
I have an activation on my phone.
Yes.
These cars driving by.
Yeah.
I would only have it on for one reason.
It was a great complaint. I was happy to hear it.
That's any, any questions for Chief? Enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. Well, I want to go back here to. Number five, reports minutes from boards, committees and commissions. Let's see, number nine, finance. Anything for finance?
This is the minutes.
You are correct. You know what? I don't have Lauren here. Lauren, you gotta help me out here, buddy. All right, so you want to do all those?
Motion to acknowledge nine, eleven, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen.
We have a motion by Zhang, second by Ermeling. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Sounds like a Sunday cartoon show. And I mean that all in a good sense, so. Reports from departments, let's see, you must have had something with the Wassa Central. Anything that report there? Did that, did that go good?
Yeah, very good report.
Okay, good. Administrator, number nineteen.
Been doing some follow-up with questions from planning commission members and. Still trying to address questions related to preparation proposal for a possible to project plan amendment. I know there's a lot of questions. We're trying to address those as best we are able at this point. Think. The sentiment is becoming that perhaps we should have a special meeting, like a working session rather than have that be the only topic on the agenda. Before we do make a decision to proceed. One way or the other with a public hearing. So. I guess we have to try to pick out some dates yet and get something out on a Zoom or on a. Doodle poll probably.
Yeah, doodle poll, good.
I guess it's pretty much highlight here other than anything else in my. My report, so I don't have questions for me of any kind.
So a quick question. The, the discussion about the transit development plan, is that based off of the report that we funded as well too? The report with the local areas, oh no, that's housing, sorry. I got the two mixed up. Oh no, we were talking about housing. I got that mixed up, sorry.
That's okay. So, yeah, they're working on this transit development plan, trying to get some input. I guess my concern is that they're probably not. Thinking outside of anything other than expanding traditional bus service, you know, and I think there's been some. Efforts even made by local industries and Crystal Finishes one, I'm quite sure that they are. From, I guess I. My understanding is that they were. Providing their own transportation for employees who weren't unable to get to work on their, you know, their own transportation. Going as far away as Maryland, picking people up, so. I think there needs to be some outreach to these companies to see what their needs are. Because if they're only getting people that are riding the bus, I think they're missing out on who really needs service. So we'll see how this goes, I guess.
That's, that's that meeting monthly that you're attending, that's with John Robinson, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
Keith, they have a special committee on this.
Keith was?
This is one that I think they started out asking.
Oh, that's right.
Your participation, so I'm sitting in for you on this.
Yeah.
So.
I, I just. I, I can only think one way with the bus. And so somebody else has to be on there other than me, because it's gotta be something other than the way it is. It has to be, and, and, and there's, there's gotta be another way to move people around.
Right.
And that, that more people can actually use it, not just a single little route.
Right.
Okay. Twenty, clerk?
I, yeah, I attached a report, so if there's any other questions for me.
Any questions for Sherry? No? Twenty-one, finance.
Just highlight my report on the final rule for ARPA funds was published a couple of weeks ago. It allows the village to use a hundred percent of its funds for government services.
Wow. Pretty wild.
That's pretty exciting and that goes on to my. We need to definitely start thinking about how we want to use it. The village board needs to get together. To start prioritizing and brainstorming.
Okay. I think you'd like a special meeting just for that. I think it's a start off at least, or maybe a section of the board. A night, you know, set aside fifteen, twenty minutes and, and if that doesn't accomplish it, maybe we do have a.
I think you could just have it reoccurring, people come up with great ideas.
Yep.
As just go by.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. When, when do we have to have funds?
Twenty twenty-four, so we got some.
Yeah, we got plenty of time. Okay. Josh, anything for fiery mess?
Yeah, a couple of things. We continue to be very busy. We're on pace to be in four hundred calls for the month again. So it's significantly up even from last year, which was significantly up from the year before. We ended last year between fire and EMS just under four thousand calls, which was up a little over five hundred calls from the year prior. So our call volume just continues to go up and this year we did obviously lose the Village of Cronin weather, but our call volume is still up, even taking that into consideration. So just very busy. We did get a new ambulance delivered last Friday. We're working on getting that in service. It'll probably be in service next week and that will be kept at the station here in Weston. And that will have the new logo that was approved at our board meeting last week, was that, I believe? So that'll be the first ambulance with that on. Super lettering will be in next week to look at that and figure out how they're gonna do everything. We did have one full-time employee resign and he dropped to part-time. He lives in the Sturgeon Bay area and he was hired by Door County EMS, so the big thing for him was the drive. It went from two and a half hours to seven minutes, so it was.
Unway.
And he's got two little kids and stuff like that, so it was pretty important for him to.
He's still staying part-time?
He's gonna stay part-time.
That's unbelievable when I heard that. Unbelievable.
And then, so we have that job posted. We do have two applicants at this point. One of them is actually an interesting story also. He currently lives in Rib Lake, but he, his commute is even longer. He's currently a lieutenant firefighter with a, with Anaheim, California Fire Department.
That's right.
And he flies out there, flies back and forth to work. And he's been doing that for like fifteen years, so he's, he's looking for something, but the issue there is gonna be is if his fire certifications will transfer over to Wisconsin, so that's what I gotta dig into a little bit yet. And we do have one other very good applicant. We got a couple more weeks yet that we're waiting.
Is it true that they let him sit up in the cockpit with the pilot? It flies, it has that many frequent.
Probably shouldn't. I, I asked him that. I said, he must have a ton of frequent flyer.
Yeah, can you imagine? Wow, he's got all kinds of wings and stuff, yeah.
And then the last thing I have is a pretty interesting story. I don't know if anybody saw it on our social media page, but we had a call about four or five weeks ago here in the village. Gentleman became unresponsive, was in cardiac arrest at sixty-three hundred Birch Street. His son was there and started CPR prior to our ambulance arriving. Our crew shocked the patient sixteen times. He survived and is back home and is doing well. Usually when we, I mean, we do resuscitate people, you know, several times a year, but usually it's one, two, maybe three shocks. To be shocked sixteen times is pretty unheard of. Especially to have a successful outcome after it. So we, we went and visited him last week and the crew gave his son a American Heart Does a CPR Valor Award, I believe it's called. So we did that through the American Heart Association, presented it to the sun last week, so. I think that's all I got.
Okay. If you could maybe email the village, Keith, the new logo.
Sure.
So we've never actually had the Safer logo on any of the equipment or on the buildings.
Correct.
And I've been kind of bothered by that, you know, because we're wondering why we're not called Safer in the media and different things and we're called South Area.
Fire District.
Fire District. And, you know, I just, you know, let's, let's tell our story, you know, it's, I mean, we're, we're in with another community. It's, it's happening. So over the last couple of months, some of the crew and Josh have put together some different ones and between the commission and the Safer Board, we picked one. And I think it's pretty darn nice and it definitely describes, you know, what each letter stands for. It kind of encircles the whole thing. And that'll start going on the equipment instead of the other wording. And I, I think it'll tell the story better. I think it'll be more identifiable. You can say it faster than all the rest, so good job. I, I think that's gonna, that's gonna play well. Okay, anything else? Nope. Questions for Josh? Okay, thank you. Park and Rick? Oh, Sean, do you have anything for us?
I do have a report in the packet if anybody has any questions.
Okay, any questions for Sean? I'm hearing none. Any, anybody from the three trustees on Zoom?
Sean, this is Husheng. If you don't hire anybody for warming house, you just don't open it or what's the plan?
Right, the rinks are still open, but we don't have staff for the warming house. It's same as we did last winter and we haven't heard anything from the public regarding not being open at this point.
Okay.
All right.
The, the building's not open, you can't warm up. Is there bathrooms or two? No.
Inside the building there is. We do have benches outside and we've had quite a, quite a few people there.
Yeah. What is that? That's, it's paid, right? That position?
Yeah, that's a paid position.
How much?
Eleven dollars an hour.
Okay. You get to skate all you want?
As long as there's no people in the building, we want them in the building then.
Okay. That's too bad. Yeah, I noticed. Well, I know Culvers is, QuickTrip is sixteen. All right, thank you, Sean. Anything?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Planning and Development, number twenty-four.
So when we get to the ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero one, I just have a small change that Lauren found. Other than that, my report is in her packet. We did approve the Aldi class week, so we will be proceeding.
Good. That's really exciting. Very, very exciting. It's a pounder and they're open on Sundays now too.
We're on Schofield Avenue, was it?
What's that?
We're on Schofield Avenue.
Uh, in the Laporte, five acres. Uh, the southeast.
Southeast corner of Schofield Avenue.
Schofield?
Fell.
Right where, you know, the.
It's all trees and everything.
Yep. What, what's that dirt day?
What is going in?
Aldis?
They are hoping to start later this year. Basically, it's getting it in their queue to get all the materials and it's kind of contained with like here on steel, things like that, so.
Same thing with QuickTrip. And the one on business fifty-one.
Yep.
They actually, they actually put that back a little bit because they're, they're opening up new ones because they want the new one up faster than a remodel, so. I'm trying blank. Is that by the Schofield vein store or the? I know, right by the Schofield Oriental. Right across the street to the south. That makes sense. All those trees right there. Got it. Holiday gas station was going to go there, which I thought would be a battle between the two. And then QuickTrip bought the property across to lay northwest, old. And then, yeah.
Well, that's probably been. Kind of sitting there running down more and more.
We just ate there, so.
Very much so. So we had chief on police, oh, I'm sorry, anymore? Jen?
No, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Jen? Anybody? All right, moving on to twenty-six, public works, Michael.
Had a report in the packet, I guess. River crossing project. They successfully bored across the river and have the mains in, so it's gonna be on pause now until the road. I guess the roads thaw out and they can start hopefully later part of March and have that project wrapped up by June. Otherwise, we got a couple of things in the packet for the Ryan Street and Trotzer station projects. And the Weston Avenue X to J public information meeting is Monday, January thirty-first at Weston Lanes. I forged the letter that went out to all the residents on the street as well as half a mile north and south. So it's a, it'll be an open house presentation with the different. Street layouts and then a presentation at six. So.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Anything for Michael? Anybody? Twenty-seven, technology. Nate, are you on?
He is not currently, no.
He's not on, then he shouldn't be blue. I'm just teasing. So anybody want to talk about the reporter, no? All good? Okay, I just, I wanna take a, I'm gonna just go back since we had nothing in public comments. I've done, I assume you're Jamie?
I am.
Okay, so I've, I've done what you two are doing right now three times. And the first time I was extremely awkward, young, and didn't know what the hell I was getting into. And the second time, okay, I had got it already, you know, and then the third time, okay, here I go, but I came just like both of you are doing. And the next meeting in February, under public comments, just get up and talk a little bit. Just, I, I just wanted to tell you both that you're both welcome. You know, there's gonna be a combination of three of you out of the four that are gonna get in, so it's pretty cool. And, yeah, so any questions, just raise your hand and, and we'll try to help. So Jamie Wyland and Jasper Harding here, right? Okay, yeah. All right, good. So if that's out of line, that's tough. Just wanted to make you feel a little better.
Could we also add that?
I always felt.
I had something?
Yeah, well, yeah. Are you on the agenda?
Pardon?
Okay, no, I'm just kidding.
Since you're on this time. I guess I would encourage either of you, if you have any questions about things that occur in the village. We have, you know, we're available for, you know, providing any information, answering questions, whatever it is you may have. So I guess we want you to be as informed as, you know, as possible, you know, if we can help out in that. We're here to help.
You know, the first time around, I, I only felt comfortable with Barb, so I could only talk to her. And we're from church. And then the second time around, I, 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 I can't remember, and then the third time. Yeah, I mean, that is though, it's helpful and, you know, you get to do that, so. And this is Steve Manel, so he is also running. And then Steve Cronin isn't here, but he's on planning. And if you know him, drives around with Everest Party Rentals. So, but yeah, that's the four that are, that are gonna get three seats, so.
The same. The same, of course, is available to any.
Yeah, anybody, yep. I, I've got questions. They normally don't let me in, but I try, I try to talk to them and see what happens, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Lauren.
If they want to have a real experience, they should have them attend the plan commission meeting.
Yeah, you, you, well, I thought Jasper did one night, right? Yes. You were at a joint, you were at a joint, yeah. I was trying to figure out who you were and I kept trying to think, God, when is he gonna be part of the agenda? And then you came up and introduced yourself at the end, so, yeah. All right, enough of that. Yeah, you can call any, anybody if you want to ever just talk or chat. Let's see, all right, work product transmittals, December building permits, twenty-eight. And the housing fee report, if you want to do those in tandem or no.
Chairman, I move to acknowledge both reports as presented.
All right.
Second.
Acknowledgement from the White and seconded by Feeny. Any, anybody have any questions? Nothing on the question? All those in favor say aye.
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 So carried. That's my fault for going too fast. Consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Barb. Second by Steve. Anything on the question? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Ordinances. Number thirty-three, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero one, an ordinance to update chapter fourteen building regulations. And make related amendments to chapters thirty-four, fire prevention and protection, seventy-four subdivision and regulations. Is that zero in there on purpose? And ninety-four zoning. Anybody say it's earlier?
Yeah.
Is it there on purpose? Okay. There you go.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero one as recommended by the plan commission and presented by staff.
Second. Motion by White, second by Zhang. Anything on the discussion?
On the discussion, this is the one I have the correction on that Lauren found. Underneath ninety-four point eight thirteen, parent three. Where it says such permit shall show, it should say such certificate shall show.
Instead of permit and certificate?
Yeah.
Okay.
One permit got missed.
Okay.
Page one forty-two.
I'm gonna pick you up tomorrow, Lauren, and I'm gonna find you something to do. Just kidding, no, good catch, good catch.
Thank you, I'm really bored.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thirty-four, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero two. An ordinance amending section ninety-four point one-three, signs within chapter ninety-four zoning of the municipal code.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Husheng?
Second.
Um, what, which one? Second by Ermeling. On the discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lauren.
Not necessarily a question, but I'd like to commend the plan commission on, on working their way through this, this particular. Ordinance change because we spent over a year on it, so.
Yes.
Thank them.
Yep, good job. And this excludes American flags, right? Flags are taken out? Pulled them completely and then.
Everything from the last meeting.
Yep, and it went from a two-by-three sign to a four-by-eight, thirty-two feet, right? Okay, good, thank you. Uh, let's see. We have a motion, a second, yes, and on the discussion, yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Did I get all three of the zoomers? Must have, huh? All right, thirty-five, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero three. An ordinance to approve the rezoning of a partial of land from AR Agricultural and Residential Zoning District to RR dash five Rural Residential Five Acre Zoning District. At eighty-five oh four, County Road J, Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, project number two zero two, one zero four, three nine. And that would be the.
I moved. I moved to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero three as stated by plan commission.
Motion by Feeny?
Second.
Second by Manel. Anything on the discussion? All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution still back off?
Yep, no, he's good.
Oh, he's ready now?
Yep.
All right, so we've got Greg Johnson on the line. Greg, you with us?
Yes, I am.
With Ellers? Isn't that just like calm, comes across, he must have some really good equipment. No wonder Nate.
Do you want to share the screen?
No wonder Nate's not on the call, so. Okay. So.
You funny guy, Maloney.
What's that? What'd he say?
This is your funny guy.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's see. So read the resolutions or Greg wants to talk first or what?
Greg's gonna do a presentation.
Okay.
That's something that, that's what Keith emailed you guys.
Okay, oh, correct. Uh, the floor is yours, Greg.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can you see my report up on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
So what the action item that's on your agenda this evening is the issuance of nine million, three hundred forty thousand dollars of general obligation bonds. For facility for the housing of machinery and equipment. So this is a portion of the financing of your broader municipal building project. Specifically that portion of the, of the building that's really for public works and, and as the title implies, for the housing of machinery and equipment. That's one of the specific purposes that are identified in the bond statutes. For which you can issue general obligation bonds, which have a, a term up to twenty years for financing. So that's the sole purpose of this bond issue is just to fund that aspect of the project. I'm gonna kind of walk through the kind of financial analysis that we included in our plan. We have about nine million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand of project costs that are being financed. The balance of, is the issuance expenses for advisory fees, bond counsel and underwriters discount. The underwriters discount is what the winning underwriter that agrees to purchase the bonds takes as their form of compensation for agreeing to purchase the bond. So the total amount that's being authorized is not to exceed nine million, three hundred forty thousand dollars. In terms of the estimated debt service on the bonds that's shown here in table three. We're estimating interest rates from point six five percent to two point seven percent over the twenty-year life of the bond. We're taking interest rates as they stand presently in the bond market. And we've added in an additional thirty-five basis points, so one basis point is point oh one percent. So we've not only factored in some of the market movement that's occurred, you know, here at the beginning of the year. But have also built in that thirty-five basis point cushion into these rates as well. So trying to be conservative in terms of the interest rates that we're projecting for this particular bond issue. So you're looking at total principal again of nine million, three hundred forty thousand. Total interest cost of approximately three million. So total debt service cost, principal and interest over the twenty-year life of the bonds of about twelve million, three hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Part of what we've looked at. Part of what we've looked at over, you know, the course of the past really year with village staff, and then also what we've updated as far as this financial analysis is kind of a multi-year financial projection. So not only take into account the debt issuance for this portion of your building project, but also looking at your other capital needs, which includes, you know, non-facility projects, roads, utility, equipment, you know, everything that's been identified in your CIP from, you know, 2022 through 2026. And then we've also incorporated future aspects of the overall building project that will likely be permanently financed at some point within the next year. The village has secured some bank loans to provide the capital for the other portions of the project. It's anticipated that those will be permanently financed, as I said, within the next year. So in addition to the debt service for the remainder of the building project, we've also estimated principal and interest payments based on your capital improvement needs from this year all the way out through 2026. So if the full CIP was funded, we look at kind of the heading here under the debt service levy. We show what the impact would be for full funding of that CIP from 2022 to 2026. So again, all aspects of the building project and then the other components of your capital improvement plan. The levy impact is about a $270,000 increase per year in the debt service levy with full funding of the CIP, which includes all aspects of the overall municipal building plan. So when I look at just the tax rate for debt service, you're presently at about $1.36 per thousand of equalized value. That's projected to go to about $2.31 for all of the debt existing and proposed. Then taxes on a $200,000 home, that's for all of the debt. And then the portion of that total for debt service that's attributable to the entire building project is shown in the far right-hand column. So it shows what that representative proportional share of the building project is for your total debt service. So again, trying to take a very big picture look here in terms of not only your building project, but what the debt service impact would be and levy impact would be for full funding of the CIP. So that's again about $270,000 increase to the levy per year if everything was funded. We have everything built out through 2026. You know, the plan kept going in 2027. You funded projects that would hit your budget in 2028. So you'll see we've built in a decrease in the levy in 2028 to leave room for future borrowings and future capital projects that have not yet been incorporated into this analysis from 2022 to 2026 financings. In terms of the village's borrowing capacity, under, you can, the village cannot have principal outstanding that exceeds 5% of the village's total equalized value. So at the end of 2021, you're at about 30% of your debt limit, 21.3 million remaining with kind of full funding of the CIP, including, you know, eventual permanent financing of the balance of the building project all the way out here through 2026. You, the village still stays under 50% of your general obligation debt limit. So still retaining, you know, about 41 million to 42 million of borrowing capacity in the farther years out in this plan in '25 and '26. So even accounting for the building project, which would entirely be funded with geo-debt and your other capital investment projects for infrastructure, equipment, things of that nature, you're still only up to about 48% of your borrowing limit, or leaves you about 42 million in capacity. So again, just what's being authorized this evening is just the, what's needed for the portion of the building project that's kind of related to the housing of machinery and equipment. Other future capital needs for 2022, it's anticipated will be financed later in the year, and other portions of the building project that have been financed through, on an interim basis, through local bank notes, that'll be permanently financed at some point within the next, you know, 12 to 18 months as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the, on the overall financing plan or this debt issuance in particular.
Any questions for Greg? Anybody online? Any questions for Greg? Lauren, Nate, or Husheng?
No.
None.
I just wanted to thank Greg for his presentation.
Welcome.
Does this one put all on our page? Has it been brought?
Yeah. Yeah.
But not on the, well, it's not on the building. I'm sorry? It's not part of the, the building project or anything like that? So it's, it's part of the packet, but not, is that?
Well, after tonight, it could be. It could be added, and it should be.
Yeah.
It should be added, yeah. Any questions?
We've had this in other versions in the past that were.
Yeah.
Slightly different because of some projects being different. I think it's under pre-dis projections, actually.
Which pleasure?
So we have to go through the resolution.
Let's do that, then. So now I get to do that. Okay, all right. Still learning. 36, resolution number 2022-001. See, I thought I did that. Initial resolution authorizing $9,300, excuse me, I got the floor. All right, thank you. I can't, I'm having a hard time reading this, and if I hear this cross-dones. I'm kind of, I'm kind of kidding, but anyway. So I'm going to start over. Resolution number 2022-001, initial resolution authorizing $9,340,000 in general obligation bonds for buildings for the housing of machinery and equipment. Which pleasure? Move by Zong.
Second.
Second by Ermling. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Do we need roll?
Let's do roll call.
Because the resolution requires individuals to.
Yeah, I saw that in the packet. Okay, we're going to do roll call, so clerk, read the roll.
Maloney.
Aye.
Ermling.
Aye.
Feeny.
Aye.
Minell.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Zagami.
Aye.
And that's unanimous? That's approved. Thank you. 37, resolution number 2022-002, a resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $9,340,000 general obligation bonds, series 2022A. Which pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move by Zong, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Maloney.
Uh, uh, yes.
Ermling.
Aye.
Feeny.
Aye.
Minell.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Zagami.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Unfinished business, number 38, update on American Rescue Plan ARPA funds.
Going to give an update, um, that we have a lot more freedom with the final rule of how we want to use the funds. At this point, the board has designated 10% of the funds for Safer and 10% for Everest Metro. And I began working with Clay to get a procurement policy together. I'll be working with Safer to do the same thing, so. At any point when they have a need for the funds, after the policy's in place, we should be able to issue checks to them for that reason.
And I want you to hear this, Josh, but I just want to, you know, sitting here as a village board president right now, Safer, I sit as the vice president of that board. You know, we have earmarked 10%, earmarked 10% each. Is there any thought now, Milt with the town of Weston has earmarked 10% EMPD and 10% Safer? Let's see, Schofield, I'm just trying to think, they did also. So that, their 10% of their funds will also come into EMPD, but their 10% will not go into Safer, it'll go into Riverside, okay? I have not heard a declaration from Ramon. So Ramon is, only shares on the Safer side. I just, and we're not making any kind of a, a motion or something tonight, but is that something that's important to us? And I want to play nice, I want to be good neighbors, and we've got a, a big contract with them or a big ownership with them. But I, I think we would want, you know, we'd want them to earmark 10% of their funds, you know, their, you know, to Safer also. Would you not agree, just in principle?
Two questions. How much is 10%? How much is the 10%?
120,000, we get 2.2.
Yeah, it's, it's considerable. It's way more than anyone else is getting out of any sheen you could possibly imagine. But I don't think that should stop us or stifle us. I don't, you know, we have, we get more, you know, and Wausau gets more, Milwaukee gets more, you know, Chicago gets more, you know.
Well, I had the second comment I wanted to make here was, I, I think even if Red Mountain doesn't go with 10%, we should still stick with our 10% just because it's our contribution, so our local law.
Okay. I, I, I just want to get the feeling there.
I agree, I just think if you want to give 10%.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Jessica on this. The, these funds that we're, we're providing to these agencies, does that affect our levy limit at all?
No.
No.
The purpose hopefully is going to be for one-time, um, things that they can use the funds for, so it really shouldn't affect our operations at all.
Okay, thank you.
I was reading that for some pages, I think that was out there.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I did. It was terrible, but. And it, it made, it made comments a couple of times about not using it to reduce your tax levies.
Right, the states cannot, there's nothing that says the municipalities cannot, but it's not wise, especially with the levy limits in Wisconsin.
Right, but, I mean, so all this time, we're hearing all these restrictions, and all of a sudden, anything under 10 million?
That's why we wait.
Billie-nilly, $10 million, oh my God. I, I can't even imagine where some of this money's going to go. But was it just so much work, you know, for the state and?
I think a lot of people are very similar to us, where we don't have a really heavy burden with COVID because we don't have like a health department. I mean, I mean, we don't have a, we're not large enough to really have part of our government reaching out to businesses in particular, like Atlanta was cutting people checks. We don't do that.
Right.
So I think the, the limited uses and questions that the federal government receives, I think they said, okay, we're done, 10 million, you can throw it to help your government.
Okay.
Michael, I, I, I agree with this, with your thoughts on that, that regardless of whether another community does, I, I believe it's the right thing to. I just wanted, but you kind of answered it, I was going to ask the question. Now, that money is used for one-time purchases or whatever, correct?
That would be the best way to use it, I mean.
Because so often we.
The board has their discretion.
Using it for something that's ongoing, and then we find ourselves in a bad place because we don't, it runs out and we don't have.
We don't know if this will continue or if more is coming, hopefully not.
There's other grants that, the infrastructure that's coming forward, but that's going to be handled differently. I believe we'll be requesting from the state for those funds.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one more question here. I recall the joint finance, when we were talking there, the intention of this 10% though was to go for Everest Metro, to go towards kind of like a stipend pay or hazardous pay or something along that. Or some of them.
Some of those, not going to be the full 10%. Um, in fact, if you attend a meeting within a joint next week, is it next week? Or no, it's tomorrow? Or no, Thursday? Yeah, we have a, a five o'clock, a real quick five o'clock before Safer, Safer Thursday?
Five thirty.
Okay, five o'clock, we have a joint EMPD.
I guess the other question I have, eventually in the future, not now, but if we can get kind of like a itemized, not itemized either, but kind of what this money is going for, just so we know as well, so that we're, we can be accountable to our constituents as well.
I'd like to have some of those answers formed too, I agree, I think we all would. Good. All right, well, that was just a little, I don't know if there's any discussion around there or not, but it says an update, so we updated ourselves, right? All right, enough of that. New business, number 39, Apache Lane Payment redesign contract amendment.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Husheng? Second, Minell. Any more on the discussion?
There's been, this, it has been approved by public work.
Yes, correct. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. Number 40, Ryan Street slash Trotzer Lane Lift Stations Project Construction Contract.
Move toward the construction contract to advance construction for the Trotzer Lane Ryan Street Lift Station at their bid price of $942,000 as recommended by the Public Works and Utility Committee.
Second.
Motion by White, second by Husheng. Any more on the discussion?
Just a question here, I guess I'm just kind of curious as to how we ended up under budget. Under, yeah, under budget or over budget, I guess, or the project being overestimated.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we, we estimate projects and put it all for bid, and that's, you know, we, we don't get a number from contractors until it's all for bid. If you remember, in June, we bid the Tanya Trisha Lift Station, which actually was about $50,000 under estimate. So, I mean, between these two projects, they, they kind of weighed themselves out. So, you know, we do our best, our best, you know, to get accurate numbers, but, you know, based on when you bid, equipment availability, you know, can't always be exact.
This, this one's below.
This one's slightly over, or over by $43,000. This summer, we had one that was under by $49,000, so.
And I, I'm not trying to, you know, I know that with the construction costs, it's, it's going, it's making it very complicated, so I completely understand that, I'm just kind of curious as to the rationale behind this, so thank you.
So it's $43,000 on 940, 950? So a bit less than 4% from it? Yeah. Okay. Let's see, number 40, we have, that was, no, that was on the discussion, so any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. And just refresh the motion and second on that, please.
It was first by White and second by Husheng.
Yep, okay, thank you. 41, Ryan Street Trotzer Lane Lift Stations Project Construction Services Contract.
Move to approve.
Services. Motion by Husheng?
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so carried. 42, last and final page, let me make note here, this is extremely unusual. For you two back there, do not get used to this, right? This usually is a 9:30, 10 o'clock deal.
I know, I was here last time.
Just trust me, all right? This is extremely unusual, so, I'm just telling you. And I, I got my fingers, I got my legs crossed, everything is jinxed. I know, I know, I probably just jinxed it, I did. I told my wife I was getting home at 12:30 tonight. So, 42, scissors lift purchase. That was not really heavily debated, but I, I thought it was a smart one, I'm just going to talk about it real quick, but it's a used equipment.
Correct.
And it's, can be used by one person, completely safe, you know, guarded and the whole bit, so.
I'll move to approve the purchase of a used scissor lift from Sunbelt Rentals for the amount of $6,200 per the Public Works and Utility Committee recommendation.
Motion approved by White, second by Hush, Zagami?
Question.
Uh, question?
Yes, since President Maloney wants us to get out 12, I'll ask a few more questions. The first question I have to ask here is, what is the life expectancy of a used lift? I'm just kind of curious here versus kind of a new one, and what is the price differences?
Yeah, I guess the, the used one is a, I think it's a 2013 model, so it's eight years old. The one we have right now is over 20 years old. At least as far as when we have, have owned it, I don't know what the manufacturer year was, but I know it was used when it was bought by the village about 20 years ago. So I, I'd assume we'd get at least another 20 years out of the machine we're getting right now.
You would never last as long as the old stuff.
Yeah.
And then the price differences, I'm just kind of curious.
Those, those.
I believe that was about, I think they were on $12,000 for a brand new one. That's about half.
And that's a normal, I mean, I, I can give you one instance, we have one up north that, that's 16 years old, and we paid just about two grand for it, and it's still running today, 16 years later. And it's still running today sixteen years later, and we don't have maybe a couple hundred bucks in it. So, anyway. Um, let's see, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Forty-three, recommendation to work with Emmens Business Interiors EBI for furniture package for municipal building project.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermely?
Second.
Second by Nate? Who was that?
Me.
Me?
Lauren.
Lauren, okay, all right, Lauren. Um, on, on the discussion, what are the parameters? So this is a recommendation. So right now, we're just working with them. They're, they're going to do some packages, they're going to do, they're going to evaluate the, uh, equipment we have now and the furniture we have now.
Right, right.
Okay.
Are we going to put the limitations of the sixty-five thousand dollar budget in there, or?
Well, that's what we have in our budgeted work, um. There's no set price here at this point. We want to do this as economically as possible, I think it would be the best I would give. I, Emmens has worked with us for a long time. They've done a lot of work with the village and furniture over time. So, and, and one of the things we want to evaluate is stuff we have and how that can be moved over to the new place.
I, um, you know, I've gotten a few calls and I know I've shared them with staff and, and others. Um, I've had some residents say, uh, you know, if you build a new, a house, you don't buy all the furniture, you know, you're bringing it over. So with that being said, I just think we have to be, you know, conservative, careful. I will tell you, um, I know who you're working with, I know who the salesperson is. I, I've got twenty-five years with this person and, uh, uh, it would be the only person I'd call. I know you had other people that you talked to, but, uh. Um, probably the most vocal, I guess, if you think about, but, you know, they, they have, you know, extremely cheap to very, very expensive, so, uh, Yi?
I'm, I'm just kind of curious as to, um, I, I noticed this is that there's three firms that were interested, but why could we choose EBI other than the fact that we work with them? Is that they provide us any special, uh, like better, uh, better furniture, et cetera? I'm just kind of curious.
I think the, uh, reasons were laid out in the letter from, uh. Cuny recommending their, that we work with them.
Yeah, they, they.
They do have the.
I mean, that's.
Pricing, the best pricing of, uh, any of the, so they were, each firm was asked to give a. Cost for, they had, there were three different. Prototype office layouts potentially that might, that would be considered. So Emmens had the best pricing on those layouts and then they, but they also have outlined the best. Um, services proposal, just in terms of what, what things they're going to be doing and not charging us time on a lot of these things, so there's. Those were, those were some other, uh, main reasons for making the recommendation.
I guess I was, what I'm also going with is what, uh, President Maloney is alluding to as well, too, was about potentially also kind of whether they have the capacity to or, um. Have contacts that we can potentially also talk to for free furniture or, um, as well too. So I'm just kind of curious as to that is what it is. I, I don't know if Church Mutual still has them as well, but they were condensing their offices and they have quite a bit of office equipments or furniture that they're trying to get rid of as well too.
We, uh, just case in point, um, I, three different purchase times, I have bought stuff that, uh, Wausau Tile was re, you know, repurchasing. And, uh, three different times I bought their, uh, conference, uh, chairs. And I, I, I couldn't believe it, and, and this salesperson is the one that directed me to them. And, uh, I've actually never had anybody do that before. I, I didn't know you could even do it, so when you brought it up, I thought, huh, because there is a lot of used furniture out there. There really is. Church Mutual is a great example.
Well, at, at my workplace, that's what we did. Instead of us going out purchasing new equipment, new furniture, we just, um, contacted, um, other individuals that we knew and they had furnitures available. So we took those that saved us money, but just a thought.
She has it available. I, I know she does. Okay, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Forty-four, project number two zero two zero zero four three nine. From the Forest Site Plan, Site Plan Amendment at nine zero zero four Progress Way.
Motion to approve, um, the Site Plan Amendment for Forest at nine zero zero four Progress Way.
Motion by Ermely.
Awesome.
Second by Manel. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry. Number forty-five, modification to section five point one three of the Employee Handbook for Clothing Reimbursement for Public Works, Utility and Park Staff.
Move to approve.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Zagami. On the discussion.
Just a question.
Yep.
Are we, um, how are we compared to the other municipalities around our area? Do we, do they also provide stipends as well to for clothing reimbursements?
Some do, some don't.
Mm-hmm.
This has been something that's been done for many years.
And those that do, how?
A little more probably from the old, uh, labor agreements, but something I think that, uh. Is, uh, is looked upon as, you know, an important benefit for the employees that are out there exposed to the elements.
And those that do, um, is there, is the reimbursement roughly the same that we're asking for?
Um.
That we provide?
I'm not sure how everybody's looked at theirs, I mean, but I think our analysis here is that, as I think was laid out at the. HR meeting is that, um. When you're talking about buying boots these days, you know. The existing one hundred ninety-five dollars doesn't go very far for, you know, when you're replacing a couple pairs of boots a year potentially or buying a coverall or cold weather, that kind of thing. So I know Director Odolski had looked at the, uh. The reimbursement requests and so forth and was basing regulations on. This, um. A more updated, realistic number, I guess, to, uh. To include in there, and we're proposing that this would just be a substitution. Of, um. Budgeted funds in the uniform area to this, uh, reimbursement. So it's, it's, it's a revenue neutral.
So the.
Or a, a, a budget neutral.
I had a, I had a question and I had talked to Keith about it because I, uh, I didn't understand the change of wording from services, employee services or.
Oh, right.
Employee of the service division. Uh, service division and then to village. So without reading any further, because I, I, I don't do that, I don't pay attention, I'm thinking it's, it's the whole staff. And so we were talking about something else, so I brought it up, and it, it does pertain to what it is here. Uh, utility, park staff and public works, so anyone out in the, you know, out in the elements, so. Are we, do we mandate a steel-toe boot?
Yes.
Yes, we do? Okay, by mandating it, you have to pay for it, okay? Because we mandated also, we, we do a hundred and fifty dollars for boots, but then we supply the jackets because we logo them.
Sure.
And we do a jacket probably twice a year. So, and I, that's, I'm just one place.
I, I, I'm also questioning, um, like he is, I, I, I'd like to see what the other communities are doing and how they're doing it. Um, and also how their wording is, if they have it just applied for, I don't know why we're changing it of employees of the service divisions. I don't know how that enters into it here, but I would like to see what the other communities are doing, um, so I can feel comfortable with it.
Well, I, I should have, I should have finished the question. Um, I asked why the change from services, employee services to that and, and, uh. Uh, you know, past administration had changed it from village to that, and, and that past administrator was. Uh, how did you put it? He was segmenting or compartmentalizing.
The fault is in the two main divisions, services division and administration.
Oh, okay.
And that's probably, that's a language that needs to be cleaned up. The, the language actually in the proposed, uh, wording and the policy does specifically name the positions and departments that are. I mean, eligible for this.
Okay.
I, I just want to add, I know that Keith, uh, Administrator Donner referred to the presentation that was laid out at the Human Resources. Um, but the Resources Committee, but I, I want to be fair here, I wasn't a human resource committee, so I don't know about the presentation. That's why we're asking for the, I'm asking for clarification here. Um, and I'm going to what, uh, Trust Me No mentioned, I'm just kind of curious, are we providing too much or too little, I mean, um. And if it's not enough, you know, I'm just trying to get, uh, to get a better understanding here. So one, that we can provide the, actually the appropriate gear or, um, uniforms or, um, you know, um, anything possible for our staff here, but also want to make sure that it's. Uh, it's reasonable as well too, so just being pre-justified, that's what I'm trying to look at here.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I.
I'm sorry.
I can talk up to it. Uh, so, you know, as we look, I, I believe, you know, the one comparison we did have was from the city of Merrill, which was, I believe, two hundred dollars. Um, you know, I, I get the receipts that employees turn in. You know, for the most part, you know, a pair of good work boots that's going to last them a year, um, is about two hundred and twenty to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, you know, a, a good winter jacket, you know, um, coveralls, you know, usually is another, you know, between sixty to eighty. So we have a lot of employees that, you know, turn in a receipt that's two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty dollars because they went out and bought their, their gear for the year. And, you know, we give them a hundred and ninety-five dollars back, so there's a gap there. Um, and then as we looked at the, our uniform contract that we currently have with Sintas, that, um, you know, employees would be equipped with a, a shirt or, you know, their work pants for the, um, for the year. Um, we realized that a lot of employees weren't, weren't fully utilizing that, um, that contract, you know. Yes, I asked them why and they said, well, you know, it's not comfortable or I, I really don't need eleven pairs of pants, but I got eleven pairs of pants because we're allowed to get eleven pairs of pants every year. Uh, so we scaled that back, you know, so, so we kind of took away from them on the uniform contract side. Um, but then this is a way to kind of make it whole, so as Keith said, the, the overall budget year to year isn't going to change between the uniform contract and the clothing reimbursement. It's still, you know, essentially twelve thousand dollars. Um, but I, I think this allocates it better so that they can then buy, you know, maybe that insulated jacket that fits them better instead of just not wearing the one that we offer. Because, you, you know, I, I want employees when it's negative twenty degrees outside and we're fixing a water main break, that they have the right clothing and not, you know, chintzing it because. You know, they, they didn't feel comfortable spending the money on that, I guess. So, so really it's.
I, I have something then after, uh, Keith, go ahead, Keith.
So I will add also that this is one of the items that we were, that we talked about with HR. As we kind of go through some of the benefits and so forth that are offered, we're looking at. Things that are going to have minimal to no budget impact or, you know. And, and, and kind of help the whole idea of retention and recruitment. And I guess that, in the spirit of that philosophy, I guess, that's one thing that we feel would be a very well-received, uh, change here. So.
I, I have one, you can go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I agree that you want to keep them, but I, I have doubts that somebody's going to decide whether they're here. Stay here or, or leave for a three hundred dollar pair of boots or two hundred dollar pair of boots. Um, I, I wish this would have been talked as part of the, uh, budget issues that we were, we were looking at. Jessica spends a lot of time, I sit on the budget, you know, on the finance committee. I don't, this is the first I've heard of this, that we're changing this. If our budget was, was over accrued for, um, you know, the. The clothing that they were getting and not utilizing, it should have been deleted out of there then, and it shouldn't have been. Included in there. It should be our budget. It shouldn't be just a slush fund. Um, I, I do think that we need to look at what other communities are doing. I, I'm, I can't be in favor of this without knowing whether we're, we're, uh, being too high or we're being too low. I, I agree that the people need to be clothed, if, if we were requiring those proper boots, that's, that's great. If, if there's certain clothes that need to be for the guys plowing the road, you're right, we should do that. But I think it should be a, an overall look at it, at what the other communities are doing, not just the. Two-inch change in our personnel manual. It's just how I view it.
Um, one more thing to add, I, and I, I don't want to jinx this anymore. Um, you brought up that you get receipts and you pay off the receipts, okay?
Yep.
Yet it's a, it's a perk for every employee, so whether it was one ninety-five and maybe going to three hundred thou, three hundred dollars. So what, do you have like a, a time schedule for each one, or is it in the month of January that you're supposed to do this, or what?
It's, it's for the year, so, I mean, some people, you know, they might buy a jacket in January.
Yep, so that's exactly what we did, drove me absolutely insane as we had more and more employees, okay? So we finally just said that's enough, and every January, we just write on payroll, boom, hundred and fifty bucks. It might be one seventy-five or two hundred now, and everybody gets it, nobody didn't get it. Uh, we, we had some guys getting seventy-five dollar steel-toe shoes at Walmart, and they wanted to get two pairs instead of one pair, you know, so. That way they, they get paid, it's done, it's out of your hair, it's out of, you know, out of looking at receipts and crinkled up, and I lost my receipt, I gotta, how do I go get it? Just a thought. So, all right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any more in the discussion? All, uh, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, no, okay, no. So, um, Manel is no, okay? Okay, so that's forty-five. Forty-six, modification to section ten point zero three, parent six, employee cell phone stipend, stipend reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Uh, let's just get this on the floor. Um, motion by Feeny.
Okay, I'll second that to get him on the floor.
Uh, second by Zagami, now on the discussion, and we're, what we're talking about is the fifty-dollar stipend for the directors stays the same. And a twenty-dollar stipend goes to twenty-five dollars, uh, a month for everybody else, and are we adding five more employees?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, go ahead, Husheng.
I think there should be, uh. There, there is a control that, I think the police department do that, I'm not sure. They have their own phone and they have a company phone. When they get to work, they change their uniform, they put their phone in the locker, and they take their business phone and they go out to their business. Why couldn't we do the same here?
And, and are you saying, um, Husheng, uh, your reasoning is to protect, uh, the intellectual data, uh, that a business phone is a business phone? Um, uh, Freedom of Infor, Information Act, if, if somebody wanted to get records and emails and texts, is that what your thoughts are?
That's correct.
Okay.
I agree with Husheng. I. Had this happen, uh, in, in my former bank, um, one of the employees was the, um, mayor over in Marshville. And he ended up not responding to the, um. Use of his phone, didn't, did not provide the texts, and then ended up, uh, having to go through whatever their disciplinary thing is, and. He was kicked out as, uh, mayor of Marshville. That happened last spring. Um, I don't think that we want to have this many phones. And the thought of having somebody have a question with, on what the employees are using or, or doing, I think we just set ourselves up for having to check thirty-six phones. Um, to find out what was being texted, and, and it even complicates it more if we lose employees. Somewhere, I, I, I'm still, I think we should have our own plan that the village owns and limited the number of phones to, um, the directors. And, you know, and really pick and choose who it is that's going to use it correctly. But once again, we should also address the phone usage, um, that should be part of the, uh, HR committee's review also.
So I'm not in favor.
Uh, to that point, uh, to that point, Mister Chairman, the HR committee went through this and approved it unanimously. Uh, and there was, uh, no one really seems to have much of an issue with this.
Were they aware of the HR, or was the HR committee informed of, uh, the Freedom of Information Act regarding, uh, text messages?
That, uh, that in and of itself, I do not believe came up, however, there were a lot of best practices discussions and. Uh, a lot of best practices discussions, and my understanding of, uh, FOIA is that it would only apply specifically to those. Um, uh, only apply to those specific instances where someone is contacting someone on village business. And, uh, as, so the only people that we as a board should be, uh, should be calling is Administrator Donner or a director. So those would be easy enough to find out. In the, uh, Administrator Donner, uh, how long has this policy been around? Uh, to the best of my knowledge, I don't know that there's been, uh, an issue with this policy in the past.
It's been in place since about twenty thirteen, I believe.
Okay.
I, uh.
Something that maybe should be examined, I guess, um.
And I've had some questions. And I've had some questions, you know, Keith, you know, Keith and I have had some talks. I've talked to the IT person that I work with. Can I get to next?
Uh, just letting you know Nate Crowe has his hand up on Zoom.
Okay, Nate, can I just finish quick? Because otherwise I'm gonna lose my thought.
No, definitely. Go ahead.
And the IT that person that we work with, and we've got an awful lot of phones in our company, but the protection of our international, you know, intellectual property is is monstrous. And so there's not a phone being used in our company that's personal. It it has to be. You can use your, you can use your. Yeah, well, just collect a pizza and then pay for it and shut the door, please. But anyway.
Sorry.
So, um, you know, we can, we can have personal, I can use my phone for personal, but it's everything can be seen by our company, everything. So whatever I do on here personally, everything I have on there is theirs, and then if I leave, they keep it. It's theirs. It stays there, it's their property. That's just what we agree on. For some people, I can't handle that. They get, they go get their own phone, and then they have two two phones. So I I I kind of feel like we should maybe stall this, you know, a meeting or two.
Perhaps already due by village attorney with some.
I I think Matt should take a look at this. You know, if we did do phones, I mean, it'd be considerable difference in pricing. I mean, our our phones are very expensive, and then there's replacements, and if you break it a couple of times, you've got to pay for yourself. So but I I I think we have enough questions on this that we should really, you know, and and to be honest, not to safeguard, to save us, you know, the village more money, but really to safeguard the employee. There there could be some issues happening here that, you know, I I, the more I think about it, you know, I text Keith village business stuff all the time, and that's not on his, on your phone, and that's your personal phone, and it's my personal, well, it's my business phone, but and I should be more careful with that.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna be, no one's ever gonna be able to search.
That's not right. That's not, that's.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't be in a situation with our employees. We're in a situation like that.
Well, and and some of our employees might not even realize that that's an issue, and we're kind of setting them up, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. White.
I move that we postpone this until the next village board meeting.
I would agree. Uh, we have a motion by White.
Second.
Second by Zagami on the questions. So, yep. We're still gonna, we're still gonna have a discussion yet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so on on the discussion, Nate, go ahead. Sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. Um, I was gonna touch the, you know, obviously, we've looked at the pros and cons of both. And back then, we looked at, you know, village owning phones. The, just, I just want to touch on like the 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 texts, all those things are taken care of. Sorry, I'm at a basketball outing. All those things are taken care of by the the telecom provider, so if you do need to get the text messages under open records request, you get those through the the telecom provider. And then as far as emails go, those are all taken care of on our cloud server. So you're not actually like needing someone's physical phone to get all that information.
But so so for instance, maybe your phone isn't the correct one. This is yours, do we pay for your whole phone?
Mine?
No, no, not you. I'm pointing at Keith.
Oh.
So yours is, yours is a fifty-dollar stipend too?
Right.
Oh, okay. So how are you, how are you collecting that off of his personal phone?
The emails or the texts?
The texts.
So the texts you can, you can submit through, like, so if he has AT&T as a provider or Cellcom, there's a submitter process you can go through to get to retrieve texts as part of an open records request.
Oh, so providers, providers provide that?
Right, so like, I mean, like, under a, uh, under like a, like a legal case, you know, when they need those kind of things, that's all, that's all taken care of. It's not like from the physical phone, it's gone through through the provider.
So the providers will take care of that. It's the Googles and the Facebook and TikTok and Twitter that won't, right?
Right, I mean.
Kind of being sarcastic, but.
I mean, I mean, like.
Providers will.
All that we're asking employees to use their phones for is email and and occasional texting. I mean, those would be the two, the two primary areas.
How do you, if if someone was to request information from someone that's, say, goes to work at Red Mountain, what, what carrier follows the requirements under state statute as far as retaining text messages? And how do we get access to somebody who no longer works here?
Sure. I I honestly, I can't think of like, that, I mean, that's a good, that's a great question, Steve. I wouldn't be able to, I could look into that more and check.
Well, and that's why we're, that's why we're stalling this.
If you, if you read.
Mr. Chairman, a point of, point of order, we have a motion to defer.
Are you calling? Are you calling the question? Okay.
I, a motion to call for the question.
Uh, question has been called. Um, all those.
Second.
He, that's correct, he needs a second for the call.
So call for the question by White, second, the question for the call by Feeny. I'm getting worked out today. Um, uh, let's see.
You have to vote on the call for the question.
Got it. Uh, so, um, all, all, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. I got stuck on the discussion part. Now we're back to.
The motion to defer.
Motion to defer. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We're out of that mess. I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss the next meeting. Anyway, I'm just kidding. Forty-seven, employee summer hour work schedule.
This is another item that we talked about at HR. I mentioned in the staff report, a number of communities are doing this, and like, yeah, it's one of those things that perhaps is viewed as a bit of a perk for summer. We have not done this, but our, actually, our our employee handbook and already provides for directors making modifications to work schedules. We have done, you know, ten-hour days at times with probably works in the summer, or to be more efficient in our taking care of work. One of the things that we wanted to find out, I guess, if something like this were to be implemented, is the board supportive of a of a day of the office being closed, like a Friday in the summer during this time? Or would they want to be building open five days a week, the eight hours a day that it normally would be open otherwise?
Can I just ask a clarification here as well, too? You mentioned that, so I'm assuming that the four days would be ten hours. Is the office gonna be open for that ten hours total as well, too? So, for example, it would be eight until six, then, is that how it would work?
That's what we have discussed to this point, and certainly can be looked at in different ways.
Well, I just, I mean, there's gonna be an awful lot of management on this, because, you know, you're talking about a ten-hour shift. So you're talking no lunch, nobody's gonna take any lunches, nobody's gonna eat in that ten hours. How's that gonna work? Number one, is it seven to five? Is it eight to six? You know, who's gonna oversee this? Who's gonna? I know we've done it with the road crew, because it makes a lot of sense when you have projects going on, that you you need to, you need to get all the equipment out there, and then you might as well spend the the two extra hours, four days a week, instead of bringing it all back and then setting it back up five times a week. I've I've been here when we've done that. I I I don't think I've been here. We do a summer hours, we go from five to four-thirty or five to four for summer hours? For four-thirty, yeah.
What are our hours now?
I I thought we did something like that for summer hours, didn't we, or something? I thought we did something like that one time.
We had something way back in the day, but.
Yeah, I I I know we did.
Yeah, every other week, something.
So, you know, so I'm thinking, okay, so how do we handle planning? You know, we've got a project that's flying. How do we handle agendas? You know, I'd like to have agendas out Wednesday night so that we could go through the agendas Thursday and Friday and not spend all weekend on these, you know, two, three hundred-page agendas, or shuffle through them on Monday. You know, because once the agendas are done, you know, staff is done. You 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 get that agenda out at four o'clock on Friday, clear sailing. Well, now the whole burden comes back on the board, and we've got to, you know, try to muddle through three hundred pages over a weekend. I mean, that's reading a novel every weekend to to try to understand it. Some of us do, some of us don't. So there's just a lot of stuff here. I I wouldn't mind thinking this one more meeting, too. And who brought up what the other municipalities are doing? You?
Yeah, that's true, yes.
Uh, I I don't think it would hurt us. I mean, would we want to be the only municipality? Initially, when I heard this, I was for it.
Well, Rothschild does it, too, Red Mountain.
Yeah, Rothschild and Red Mountain. With administration?
Nothing, Tony.
Okay, what day do they take off?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, county highway department is Monday through Thursday.
Yep. Well, that makes sense, you know, for the highway department, for the road crew. But what does administration do? Does administration split in half? And then one works Monday through Thursday, and the other group works Tuesday through Friday, and then every two weeks you split again.
So we can get more detail on that, I guess.
I I just, I mean, there's gonna be questions that the staff is gonna have on this. I mean, what what are we doing here? I mean, okay, now it's approved, now what?
Well, another thing I want to add is, I I want to make a point, I'm not against this idea as well, but I just want more information as well. Second is, have we solicited input from staff as well, too, and is that something that they're all interested in as well, too? I don't want to just implement this out, and then all of a sudden, they're all like, well, did we, did we have our, did they have their? To us, well, too, so that's kind of curious.
Sure. There has been some, it's just one stamp upon it, yes.
You know, like, Roman's in the audience here, and, you know, and Scott for inspections. Does that allow us to do inspections when, you know, if people are working eight to five? You know, can we do inspections a little bit after five? Can we do inspections a little bit before eight? I don't, you know.
They do at least, years.
You do now?
This a- this afternoon, I was in Corona water at four o'clock.
Yeah.
Two, four, forty.
But that's still in the realm of five eights.
They've gone to.
You know.
They've done stuff at night for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they actually do do maintenance on Fridays, so.
Yep. I mean, I know, I know the crew does. I mean, I know the water utility did some different stuff for Tommy's Car Wash, so they would be closed, you know, six hours like last year. And that was very, very helpful. They were extremely thankful for that. But, um, why don't we, go ahead.
Yes, so I got a message from Dan Raskowski, who worked at the highway department.
Yeah.
He said, um, in the office, one supervisor and one office person works Friday, but they rotate that amongst this staff.
So it was like an in-service day. I mean, for a while, before I got on this third time, didn't we have Fridays kind of in service?
No, no.
I I thought we did.
We used the federal holidays for.
Okay, really?
That's a day or so.
Well, I, woman, wasn't, I thought, I I I thought I'd for sure remember talking to you and Scott that one day was in-house to get stuff caught up, and I thought.
Mine is God's schedule is.
Yeah, okay, so it is.
Use Fridays typically.
Okay.
I mean, there's, we do have some flexibility with that, but we try and schedule Fridays as our maintenance day because, you know, we handle the maintenance on, you know, all the buildings.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's right, he was doing some pool stuff on Friday, okay.
My suggestion, Mark, too, is like with the office staff that, and I had suggested it to Keith that it would probably work better for us to work five days a week and have somebody have off, or one or two employees have off each Friday, so we would rotate. That would, that was my recommendation, that I thought made more sense for our department.
So if you had the day off, though, then that weekday were four-ten, or what are you saying?
Or, or maybe something less, you know, maybe it's a nine-hour day or something. They leave early on Fridays or something like that.
Well, then this goes back to what I was saying, is that I want to hear more, I guess, more discussion occur, maybe staff input and come up back to us with something a little bit more concrete. I'm not against the idea. I think that's, I I mean, some of the businesses, an area here transitioning, Kobe and Kobe does that as well, too, so, and I I'm not against it, but I just want to have something more solid to be able to work off.
Because the first thing you're gonna get is a guy comes up to the door and finds out we're closed. And, you know, well, you know, not only am I paying taxes, it's, you know, now we're closed. I had people actually come up and comment about, you know, oh, I came to pay my water bill and I couldn't, I had to come back another day or something, you know, and it.
Okay, so what's your pleasure?
Motion to defer or post table. Tell you what.
Mr. Chairman, it should be deferred. Table would be, you'd take it up at the same meeting that we're in right now.
Okay, so. That motion by Song and a second by.
I'll second.
Second by Ermeling. Uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Number forty-eight, handbook for elected and appointed officials, handbook with tracked changes. And what does this mean? And then handbook with tracked changes accepted.
You, uh, Sherry, do you want me to explain this?
Go for it.
Yes.
Okay, the, those are links, is it to the cloud or to the? The handbook with track changes is the document that I got back from council after review by one of their staff. So that should have a bunch of red lines and markups and additions and deletions in it. So so that kind of gives you a roadmap of where your handbook with track changes accepted is. That was the one I handed out last meeting.
Right.
Draft on the front of it. And I believe the the thought was to give trustees an opportunity to read through that without all the.
Okay.
Even examples of what the track changes were, so you had some idea what was done. Um, just a further point is, this is a resource material, there's no, what it does, it takes about eight textbooks that, and condenses them into one place where you can find out about parliamentary procedure. It's there, it it's not a rulebook. It's it's a resource for for elected and appointed officials, so that we're all on the same page when we talk about conducting meetings. And that's, and that's what you saw after you take a look at the handbook with track changes accepted. And I don't know if that explains it well enough or not.
Okay, well, thank you, Lauren. And I I have not read the whole thing. I have read a lot of it. I have accepted a lot of it. It it is a resource, it is a a document that's, you know, evolving, right, Lauren?
It depends upon if the, if the board wants to make changes to it, that's fine, but if we're gonna have seven fingers in this, the clerk is gonna have to take care of it.
Yeah, you can. I agree. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
I'll make motion to accept.
Well, motion by Ermeling to accept? Is there a second? Second by Zagami on the discussion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Lauren.
Mr. Chairman, one further comment?
Yeah.
This is for Sherry. She's gonna have to change and take the draft off of that then, and put a final date on the header that this was accepted. Do you understand, Sherry?
Yes, yes, I can do that. And then where would you like to keep the handbook? Do you want it to stay out where I have it right now, or do you want to stall printed copies that don't have the word draft on it, or what should I do with that?
How many pages?
How many pages total?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five back on on both sides?
No.
Those are singles? Yes, I thought so, too.
So.
Maybe have printed copies out here?
Yeah, yeah.
I would think so.
Yeah, I agree.
I I wonder if we can, uh, I I I, this is my thoughts, you know. I I don't think it's necessary for us to print it off. I think what we need to do is just at the beginning of every turn, just sending it out to the full board, so the board has it mailed out, and so that they all have it. I I I, that's just my thoughts. I mean, the county board does that, and it's 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 a lot easier that way. Just sending in a reminder that they all have it, and they can access it at that link. I think that would just be easier. I mean, and those that do want a hard copy, they can request for one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Lauren.
The other advantage to having it online is all the hyperlinks work in a digital version of it, whereas a paper version, if if you understand hyperlinks, in other words, you click, you click on a section number, it'll take you directly to the section, you don't have to page through it. That's the way it was set up. But you could always have it, you can always have it on our website, too.
Gotta have those hyperlink. If that's the last link I learned, I'll be fine with that. I want to slide in the home right at the end. I want to do, I just want to slide in. That's what I wanna do, like, slide in with no, nothing, no batteries, no nothing.
I can put it on the website, like, under.
Actually, that's a good.
Government, and then trustees in that section.
Yep.
Well, th- this manual is also meant for other committee members too, so.
Sure. Okay, I think we got it out there. Good points, uh, so, um, we didn't vote. Um, all those in favor say aye? We did?
We did.
Of course we did. Yes, we did. So forty-nine, appointment to the human resource, uh, committee. I don't believe, I don't believe we have a human resource, do we? Or, no. So we, uh, yeah, that one we're still searching. So that's a search yet. Fifty is appointments to the finance committee. Did we get Dwayne Dow's application in?
Yes, I mailed that, or emailed to all the board members over the weekend.
I also have a hard copy of.
And, and, and David Jemal, right? We have both.
David, I, I attached it.
That's already there, yep, I see.
I have a hard copy of Dwayne's.
So we.
I'll make motion to approve both David and Dwayne.
Uh, motion by Zong to appoint David and Dwayne, uh, both to the finance, which would then be a full committee. Do we have a second? Second by Feeny.
Question.
On the discussion, yes, Hushain?
Uh, I know Duinga for, uh, quite a few years, when he was the highway commissioner. Also went through, was a leadership with him. I know him very well. And as far as I concerned, we should appoint him to planning commission or a public work. Not the finance committee. I think he will do great job in any of those position. I'm not saying he's not gonna do a good job at finance committee, but he's well suited for those, daughter to committee.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Lauren.
Are there vacancies on the planning commission?
No, there's not.
So that's kind of a moot issue at this point.
Uh, correct the window. And, uh, Dwayne, Dwayne did mention to me that he just wanted to serve, um, um, he, he probably thought I wouldn't, would not appoint him to another committee. Um, I, I thought this would be something that he could sink his teeth back into again, talk to Jessica, and, uh, we'll see how this goes.
I, I just also.
So attendance is gonna have to be a priority.
I just wanna make another point that by appointing him to this, it doesn't mean that he can't be appointed in the future.
Oh, correct.
Planning committees.
Correct.
Correct. That's correct.
That can happen.
Okay, that was gonna be my concern.
Yep. Yes, a, attendance is an issue, so, um, but.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, uh, so attendance was an issue, the, the, the last, uh, service.
Right.
Okay, so, I think we beat the hell out of that one enough, so, let's, um, um, so, no more on the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Attorney referrals, you're gonna talk to.
I will refer the, uh, cell phone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, policy to attorney.
Okay, uh, remarks from trustees, uh, Hushain?
Uh, I have a question for Keith. Mister Donner, you respond to that, uh, question for, um, uh, planning commission, it was between you and Michael and Jennifer. How much time you spent on that?
Time about the one I was mailed today, emailed today?
Correct.
Well, at least a half day on it, probably.
Maybe we should do some research when we have some question, I think we can find the answer with those researchers.
Well, I guess I'd, well, I, I, I'm, my assumption, my understanding is that, you know, that's part of our duty is to reply to questions and provide information when we're asked, so, uh, in this case, you know, we've been talking, it seems, uh, for over a couple months here on questions about TIT too, so we're trying to address those.
So, so the question by Hushain was, um, uh, by Steve or Steve, right? So I, I think that's extremely healthy and smart, that we're giving staff more time to digest the question, and then get the answer back to the entire, uh, commission. Instead of trying to do this, you know, under the gun, um, and, and, you know, and every, every meeting or every commission meeting we have, it's, it's another set of questions, because everyone is learning, every, including me. I'm learning a lot about TIT and TIF, I, I don't know how much more I wanna learn, so, uh, but I, I think it's very healthy, and I think it's very, um, smart to be asking these questions ahead of time, regardless if it's taking time, because they, now they can actually get an informed and a factual answer out.
Yeah, Mister President, you're assuming there is no more question coming back to them, which is not gonna be true possibility.
There may be, that's how this works.
Yep.
That's how it works.
Well, that, that's a lot of a time, and.
Yeah, that, that's, that's our system, it works. That, that discussion, uh, that answer and, that question answer is paramount. So.
Sir, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I know we're not supposed to make comments on trustee remarks, but I think it's beneficial for all of us on the plan commission to hear these questions and the answers, because being the chair of the plan commission, I can tell that there's, they are questions that are, uh, had by more than just one member.
Correct. So, with, with that, uh, comment, um, how about any remarks from you, trustee White?
Uh, I have none.
Okay, uh, trustee Feeny?
Yeah, I just, uh, have one. Today is, uh, the day we set aside and remember Dr. King. And, uh, one of his quotes has been sticking with me for, oh, the last two years. Um, we must accept finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope. And that pairs, uh, very well with, uh, with one of his other ones. I see the greatness of America, and I criticize her because I love her so. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, uh, trustee, uh, Ermeling.
Um, just that I will not be here physically at the next meeting. If I can get through all the internets and not all, I will try to make.
Yeah, talk to Nate, see if he can help you out back. Okay, right, we're gonna have Nate help.
Well, I just, I, I'll have my iPad and I.
Well, you're in Florida, that's right, what are you, busy?
We're gonna talk about the next meeting date.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, trustee Zong?
I'm from.
Trustee Manel?
Nothing.
Nothing. And I had a whole bunch of stuff, and now I can't remember it. I just, I'm actually a little shocked, I don't know if I should stall, keep this till about nine thirty?
That's all right.
Absolutely unbelievable. You two are very spoiled, just so you know. Um, glad to have you attending both tonight. You two, Roman, nice to see you again, I think I saw you last hour. Uh, but no, I have nothing else, so, um, meeting dates then, what are we talking about?
Okay, so, February twenty-first is a day the, uh, the markets are closed, so we wouldn't be able to.
It's president's day.
Present, yes.
It's president's.
I did? What, are we gonna, did we do a monkey's or what? Can you do it? I don't get it.
Among the resolutions that were, that were done tonight on the borrowing, uh, was just to say that we would, that the board would act upon, uh, is the award of the selling of the bond of a successful bidder at our next meeting date, and I guess, or at a subsequent meeting of the board, so they won't be able to open any bids on the twenty-first, it would be done on the twenty-second. So I, I guess there either needs to be a special meeting for the bond item, or the other thought was, maybe we would just schedule our next regular meeting for Tuesday the twenty-second instead of the Monday the twenty-first.
Only 'cause I don't have a clue what, what we're actually talking about here. So we, we have to actually do this opening on Monday, we could not open it on Friday?
No, they can't sell it. So what happens is they have to sell our bonds on the, on that same day we accept the bids.
Got it.
And so Greg said we could push it to March, I'm hesitant, because obviously rates are climbing, so I don't know if we wanna push it off of one whole month. So that's why we're wondering if we could move the regular meeting to Tuesday, February twenty-second, so we can open the bids from our bond sale that day.
I agree.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister White.
As far as I know, Safer has got a meeting, Board of Directors got a meeting on the twenty-second at six P M.
Yes, we do, I just checked.
Um, on February?
Yep, February.
Yes.
Okay, I don't have that in here yet. Did Chair send that out?
I'm not sure, I always put them in at our meetings or previous meetings. Cause other option is to just have a special meeting for that item only.
I think, uh, it won't take a, I have a feeling that that won't take very long, as far as that goes.
Normally, that's been done in the past, I know as well. That's other option.
It's, I, it's a pretty important issue, I think we can have a special meeting. That's my opinion only, I think we can have a special meeting.
I'd rather dovetail that into the week before Monday, into planning. Why not have a whole week in advance, or do they need more time?
They have that ready by then.
I know, I think Greg was, the plan with the schedule is anytime after that day.
Okay, gotcha.
With our lawyers and finance advisors, I think the schedule is to have it for the twenty-first.
All right.
A special meeting at five, since Safer's at six, right?
Sure, yes.
I, I won't be able to make it on that day, I have Marathon County Board meeting on that day, and also a human resource meeting before that. Okay. And if you physically can't make it, Zoom is fine too, we just need four. We just need a four.
True.
Okay?
Mister President?
Yes, Hushain?
I have a question for Jessica. Jessica, are they gonna sell at local, or they're selling at the statewide?
The bonds?
Yes.
I think it's national.
Yeah, it's a national bond sale.
I thought they were, before they were selling at local also.
Locals can bid on it.
Right.
Yeah, locals can bid.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, um, so.
We're gonna look at the.
We're gonna do the twenty-first, and then we're gonna have a special meeting quickly on the twenty-second. And Josh does that meeting here, at West.
That's station one.
Station one of this? Okay, that's fine. Okay. Um, nothing else? Uh, I don't see anything from staff on here. Did we miss staff on here? Anything from staff?
No.
No? I'm, uh, we need an adjournment for the meeting.
Record.
Move by Zong, second by Manel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
So carried, thank you all.